I'm glad they get to be with those things.
No, I think it's like.
They got donuts again today?
I shouldn't say that, maybe they do.
Were you over complaining about me again?
Getting one of those number machines like at the old barber shop.
I like to go occasionally make sure somebody's moved something and occasionally someone is doing something.
Um, I don't believe they'll have anybody because it's mostly.
Yes.
Good morning, it's 10 a.m. We ask you to please rise if you're able for the current pledge of leave before we convene the committee's meeting. Heavenly Father, on Monday we celebrate the 104th anniversary of the 19th Amendment. What started as suffrage tea parties led to the right for women to vote. And we celebrate these great women for being the frontiers. Briefly thank for the women that many are mothers and leaders of the past and the present. We thank you for their amazing lives, sacrifices and contributions they have made to make all our lives better. Lord, remember the 30th anniversary this past Tuesday of the loss of 13 service members killed in Afghanistan. We know they died protecting others and they're heroes whose memories will never be forgotten. We ask you to continue to comfort their families and friends and provide them the peace and comfort only you could provide. We pray for the daily protection of our military men and women. And today we celebrate the 109th anniversary birthday of the United States Marine Corps Reserves. It was established by President Wilson due to increased demand for warfighters in World War One. The force began with 35 Marines and has grown to approximately 40,000 reservists. We honor those that have sacrificed and thank them for their bravery in service. This Monday we'll celebrate Labor Day. Today we repay tribute to the American worker for contributions and achievements. We know that you want us to thrive in every aspect of our lives. You've given us talents, gifts and tools to accomplish that. And in your word you state, you shall eat the fruit of the labor of your hands. You shall be blessed and shall be well with you. Lord, we thank you for the millions of Americans that give up each day and work hard to feed themselves and our families. We continue to meet their needs and bless those that labor. We pray for your guidance over our meeting this morning. It seems we humbly ask of your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands on one nation under God, in the midst of all纷争纷争纷争纷争 Morning, at this time we convene our commissioners' public meeting. And we'll ask for approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll make a motion.
A second.
On your side?
Aye.
Aye. Do you have any public comments on agenda items only at this time?
I have a comment on the prayer if I could.
Yes.
If there be a question, do you know which state was the first state to allow women to vote? It was Wyoming. It started, it was a very Western movement started. And as you can imagine, the East Pennsylvania was not very cooperative in allowing. The old guard stood very hard, but it started out west, came east. So there you, there's your history, Les. You should watch the History Channel.
I do. Watch it a lot. It's a great station.
It is.
Yes, it is. Okay, um, here you know, public comment. Here's the bid openings.
Um, the bid that closed on Friday was testing an inspection of the Lake Homing County Coroner Building and there were no responses.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Get on the reports.
Uh, presented for your ratification, our invoice is due through September 4th, 2024, to be paid on August 28th, 2024 for $3,915,259.86. The breakdown is as follows, from general funds, $2,593,463.05 for a percentage of 66.24. From other grants, $40,228.38 for a percentage of 1.03. For RMS, $1,225,964.14 for a percentage of 31.31. For escrow, $55,604.29 for a percentage of 1.42.
Got a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Is there any questions or comments?
Um, yeah, I, I don't know.
Obviously still kind of being new. I don't know who, who I really asked the questions to, but like I thought the law library expenses were extremely high this month. Is that normal or is that?
Um, I don't know off the top of my head. It was probably. I don't have the breakdown with me. I can find out the detail and get back to you on that.
I see like there's a lot of law firms that charge that on. So I'm just kind of curious what gets really charged there. And I'm assuming that a lot of the reentry is.
Regarding the move, yeah.
That's.
Do you know?
Uh, the law library, I'm not certain with that, uh, but would be driving that because. That is probably it. It would get with Jen McConnell, figure out.
Whatever.
We can get back to you.
Alright, thank you. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Motion.
I'll make a motion.
On your side? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, sorry. Yes. Um, information items we have, like again.
Nope, we have information items we have.
No. I did have it on there.
She hit the wrong date.
So he must have gave you the law.
She hit the wrong.
Okay, sorry about that. So we have Tony Visco to give a presentation of the design concept for the first floor of Third Street Plaza.
What I'm gonna just do is a brief, Tony, could you stand over here with podiums at?
Sure.
Thank you.
I have to point to something.
Okay, alright. A long pointer.
I can always have Eric point out those areas he can play. It was up there.
It was, yes. That's what we just said.
Call someone from my team.
So in the past, when we did design the third floor for this building, we had a presentation, we had the, um, actual. Blueprint up on, up, uh, on the screen over there. Can you remember that? And, uh, so we've asked Mr. Visco to be here this morning to present what's going on in the first floor so far.
Eric, why don't you show up there so you can point to some of the spaces? This first plan here is strictly the existing building footprint of first floor as it is pretty much today. There hasn't been any change. I mean, the original bank that was in the eastern half of the building, all the partitions and areas are all still the same. So that's that first photo. I just wanted to show and then go ahead and go to the next shot. Everything was working earlier. My goodness.
Morning kids. Those days when we had wires.
Or it's. There we go. It's the old one. That's the original.
Yep.
At least the existing. This next photo or next image is basically indicating. The expansion of voter services into the rear section near the existing vault. And then the opposite front northeast corner has a community room that's basically being set up as a. Area for commissioners to have meetings held there as well. Do you want to point that that air? And we modified the entrances as, as a smaller sized vestibule and a little bit better circulation corridor wise. And then a large vacant open space in the center and toward the front would be the proposed location for register and recorder. And with the assistance of Matt McDermott. In securing some, some of our, some of the people that actually use this space, many of the abstractors. We were able to at least come up with a design to this point that isn't complete, but if you want to go to the next. That slide. Whatever we should call those. That's an old term. That shows kind of a finished space with some offices, uh, plenty of, uh. Stacks like you would see in a library for book storage. Uh, actual computer stations toward the rear. When we spoke to the abstractors, they said they'd like to have a, just a back entrance to come in. Sit down at a computer, print out what they need and just scooch right back out. So we, we kind of liked that idea as well. And then we have a front entrance right at the front. Some computers for some of the general public that are just looking for some reference information or that they need. Uh, from some of the documents and, uh, we have two, in a sense, reception areas, one for marriage licenses and one for. Pretty much all else. And that's as far as we've taken this design as we know it today. And just for, just for clarification in some cases here. The existing courthouse space for register and recorder, as we are able to calculate it at this time, is 4,264 square feet. The proposed Third Street Plaza space with the vault included is 4,966 square feet. So it's a, actually a bit of a gain of 702 square feet. Most of the change really happens in how we process this shelving. And, uh, I'm not going to go into all the details of what, what we came up with, but certainly. We took every single cabinet that's over in register, reporter basement and first floor photographed, measured. So we know what all the lineal footage is and it's around 405 feet, six inches of storage space. That is shelf storage space of all types and all depths. Uh, the new shelving that we have capacity wise in the new. Third Street Plaza location is around 623 lineal feet. So it's really about a 53% increase. So that does allow for easy growth. You don't really need to use any type of, what we did show as an example is a Rotomat 500. Which is a vertical storage carousel that can store a lot of documents, especially ones that might be vintage that you only refer to on rare occasion. But you know, we did learn quite a bit from the abstractors on how far back they have to trace even back into. Wills that go back into the 1800s to ensure that they know the complete history of a property. And, and I will clarify, okay, the next shot, we're gonna, well, actually I'll clarify that all of this is subject to. Adjustments in the design. I mean, if we had to make some adjustment based on a change of a design for registers, register recorder. And, you know, God forbid Forrest, I might have to steal a couple of square feet out of your space. You know, we'll make those kinds of adjustments and still make sure we accommodate what we knew in detail. What we had to do to accommodate voter services because currently as the commissioners know. They just have everything splayed out into the old abandoned bank area and all that needs dedicated storage. So as I say, everything is kind of a fluid type of thing. Some of the other drawings I did bring here. Have to do with the facade of the building. I thought we'd include that and also talk about the site. So I'll try to go through that quickly.
Back in real quick, Mr. Visco.
Yes, sir.
Um, the, we're, we're saving the safe. That's being utilized if I'm correct for the orphan court's records?
That, that's what ideally can fit in there very easily. We have more than enough space for that. I don't remember exactly Eric, what the additional capacity was in there. And it's not important. I know it was more than what they have now.
And it's more secure because it's.
Yeah, we don't have to have the vault door on there. We can remove the vault door and just have the gate as part of just, you know, keeping it somewhat secure.
But the vault will keep it from, the vault door would keep it fire protected and water protected, correct?
Yes. And of course, as you know, it was extremely expensive.
Saving the taxpayer is something around $80,000.
No, more than that.
Eighty-nine.
No, it was over a hundred.
For the first one.
Well, it was over because of the prevailing wage act. It was over a hundred thousand.
So over a hundred thousand dollars in savings.
Yeah, yeah.
Keep that.
And really, it's a big open space. I mean, once all the safe deposit boxes are out and everything, it's one big open space that we can. That's what we did is line them up with shelving and interior center shelving in the middle for all those documents.
And why move a safe that's going to cost over a hundred thousand dollars when we can utilize it?
Yeah, and, and that was just removing it. We still have to commit and patch the floor because I know with that vault. The floor is depressed and we have to fill that concrete floor and, and certainly. All the finishes and windows we have to put back in is probably, you know, another 20 or 30 on top of that. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. This is just the exterior elevations and I realize it doesn't show you a lot, but what we, this is the facade portion of, of the project we're looking at next. As far as re-coating the exterior insulation finish system. And this might be an example. I, I started to, you know, colorize this a little bit. Currently it's a stone gray. But I do want to give identity to the front entrance. We've added a front canopy to the, uh. To the entrance for Lake Homing County and whatever the Lake Homing County would like to say on there, other than Lake Homing County, I'll be more than happy to accommodate you signage wise. Also to the far left is another pair of doors because that becomes a community room. We will actually need a second means of exiting out. So we're going to have just a single or a pair of doors at that location. But no canopy because it's only going to be for emergency use only. As a matter of fact, trivial, but we're not going to have any door hardware on the outside. You can only exit out and not come in. Okay, and the last couple of slides, this is a site plan for Basello Engineering, which is. The survey of the existing. Block, uh, that Third Street Plaza is on. And of course, at the top is West Third Street. And, uh, at the bottom is the parking under the, under the canopy. And it's just all the existing conditions. And then, uh, go ahead, you can go next. The second one. I can't tell from here. Did we move it? Get the next one, Eric?
Yeah.
Okay. That's where we're doing the diagonal parking on Pine Street and also getting rid of the canopy and changing the entrance. Uh, at the south end. Right down here in the far left, the far right corner area. That entrance is now going to be two-way in and out and we're getting rid of that little dog, that little tail that used to hang in there, down there. The other thing is, is when we're doing this facade changes, we're going to make the columns at all those parking locations in the back. Uh, let's put it this way, as bulletproof as we possibly can because as you know, those have suffered quite a bit of damage over the years. And despite their efforts to have various, they had steel angles in the corners, they got still beat up pretty bad. That's hopefully with changing the parking configuration, that is, the way people enter and leave, it may become less of an issue as well. But that's that proposed one. And certainly we did, I, I know we were asking Basello for a proposal to do. The courthouse with similar diagonal parking on Port and, um, Pine Street. And I just wait for your gentleman's approval to start that design process so we can maximize parking. Around the public facility, the county courthouses that are courthouse and Third Street Plaza, that will make it more, let's say, user friendly by the public. I don't have anything else. Is there any questions, Commissioner?
Thank you. No, thank you. So Forrest, do you have any questions?
No, uh, I, I mean, I think just the outside here will tremendously improve our election night operation. Uh, you know, I, just knowing the traffic patterns we use for the poll workers when they, when the precincts come back. That diagonal parking on the west side of the building actually kind of memorializes what we do on election night. Where we have to close that whole block that people drive on the left and diagonally park to fit vehicles. And so now. Now we'll actually make the sheriff's jobs when, when we have to close Pine Street and get vehicles parked. So that looks fantastic.
Well, this is still subject to city zoning approval as well. And that's where we. There's something that's fallen through there where we haven't made any progress moving that part forward. So.
Anything we can do to make the sheriff's job easier? That's what we're here for. So again, um, you know, increase services to the photo services, making his office more efficient. Um, improving the security at the courthouse by moving the registry recorder across the street, having everything on one level for them. Something that hasn't been updated since 1970, that office, he's expressed this dire need of more space. So we continue to welcome him to the table. Um, we want to improve the security in the courthouse by moving him out. We move probation down to the first floor. And then we free up the third floor for the sheriffs once again, they can put all four horn cells on one floor. And transportation of, and movement of inmates within the courthouse is restricted. Uh, instead of going from the basement up to the second floor and the third floor, uh, it just improves security overall. So again, thank you. Thank you for your efforts and plans. Commissioners, anything you want to add?
I was just gonna say, I think when it's done, people are going to be really happy. Um, the third floor, all the people that, I should say, I can't speak for everyone, but the, the total, the attitude of, of all the people that work on this floor. Is that it's, it's turned out incredibly nice and probably nicer than we expected. And we really like the flow and the way it works. Uh, we just had a meeting up on the fourth floor the other day with the joiner. And they're happy with the way their floors turned out as well. So, uh, everywhere Tony and his staff have, have done a great job. And we expect the first floor to be just as good. And then as Scott just said, it'll make the courthouse more efficient. We're just happy to get it started so we can get it done.
We also have major storage needs as, uh, you know, the thought attorney's office has brought that to our attention. Um, you know, he's out of space. He needs space. Uh, this will provide him more space in the basement for the next generation. Also the DA's office, domestic relations also need space in that basement. And basement should be used as storage now for employees to work out of. So it, it allows that storage to feel so freedom. Another, so it affects so many different departments by making these moves and making them more efficient. And addressing future needs. Thank you. Fine? Anything you want to add?
No, I, I agree a hundred percent. I mean, the, the biggest downfall of the previous plan was offices in the basement. And a lack of storage. I think this fixes all of those problems.
And having inmates in the basement. And transporting, you know, you have.
Up and down.
Two cells up on the third floor, two cells down basement and you're transporting them down on elevators.
Way too much movement within the courthouse of people that didn't need to be on the higher floors.
Thank you. Fine.
Great. Um, Mark from Southern Airways is here to provide an update.
Good morning.
Welcome, Commissioners. How are you?
Good.
Recognize a couple of you from our opening event. And I must tell you, having just flown in from Boston and being here before 10 o'clock. It is wonderful not having to drive here from Philly. So, uh. I had a couple of satisfied customers on our flight and, uh, they were also very, very pleased with the service. So, uh, let me give you a little background about the company. Um, as you know, we went public last summer. We're now part of Surf Air Mobility, which is an LA-based, uh, company. Very advanced in terms of technology. Uh, they have a West Coast all-you-can-fly airline. Basically flying people from suburban LA to suburban San Francisco. Pay five grand a month, you have unlimited flying. So it's a very different model than our, our model, but it's a very successful model. The other thing about our company now is in addition to the Southern Airways, Mokalele, Surf Air. We are also in, uh, partnership, uh, with aircraft manufacturers to develop, um, the first hybrid electric caravans. So, uh, we may receive up to 100 new airplanes over the next five years. About half of them. Are going to be conventional, uh, Jet A powered and half of them will be hybrid electric. 70% less carbon and 50% less fuel. Fuel being our second biggest cost after pilots. Um, that will be a good cost saving for us. Plus they're super quiet and super nice. So a lot of good things happening. Um, we're delighted and very proud to be, um. Uh, Williamsport's home hometown airline. I know you guys were without service for a long time. My buddy Richard and I worked on this project for. A long time and we appreciate your, um. Nice contribution to help make things happen for us. Um, we were really not in a position to start this service when we did. Uh, just because of our own aircraft availability, uh, situation. You may know that the big airlines. Who were on this massive binge to hire pilots, they're furloughing them all because they can't get aircraft from their manufacturer. So it's a very. It's a very chaotic time in the industry, but, um, Richard did not want to lose the TSA out at the airport. And we decided to come in sooner rather than later. So we are running just 10 flights a week. Uh, but we're doing very well with them. And let me, let me tell you how well. Uh, we've just finished our 90 days here. We have already flown a thousand passengers, which doesn't sound like a lot. But when you're getting them nine at a time, that's a, that's a lot of flights. Um, between July and August, our traffic increased by 46%. We can thank the Little League World Series partially for that, but a lot of those folks did not fly in here. They, they had, you know. Either drove in from the big airport or they weren't aware of the service because they were coming from another part of the country. We know we got a little boost from them. But we're also on track for September. We're looking at, uh, we're tracking for another 25% increase month over month. So if we're doing those kinds of double-digit increases every month, it bodes, uh, very, very well for the service. In terms of the actual passengers, um. About 31% of the passengers to date are locals just going to DC. One of the things that's great about Dulles is I told Richard this morning, I flew in from Boston. Um, and saved me. Um, and saved me a night, you know, overnight trip and, um, went to Terminal C at Dulles, the little mini bus picks you up and it drops you right outside our hold room. You, you literally compared to a lot of big airports, I probably walked a hundred feet from off the plane onto the bus and into our hold room. So it was a nice, easy connection. And the same connection that I made is accessible from about seventy other cities for people who are coming inbound. So we feel good about that. But thirty-one percent of our customers are just going to DC. They love the metro. You can now walk right through baggage claim at Dulles. Get on the metro for six bucks. You don't have to worry about traffic. You don't have to pay a seventy-dollar Uber. Uh, and it's ni- nice and easy door-to-door service. About fifty-seven percent of our Williamsport customers are connecting to United Airlines. United has their, uh, third largest hub at Dulles. And they fly to over a hundred domestic and international connections. And then the international connections are really all over the world. So it's, it's a very, very good hub. It's also a, a multi-directional hub. So if you're going down to the southeast, you're going to the Caribbean, going to Europe, you're going to the northeast, um, you can really go a lot of different directions from Dulles. And then thirteen percent of our Williamsport customers are connecting to American and Alaska, both of whom we also have, um, interline partnerships with. So, so far, so good. We've got, um, a long way to go in terms of getting the message out. You know, when you don't have service for a long time, as you guys didn't, people get into another habit, you know, and they're just gonna park the car in Philly, we're gonna stay overnight. Gonna drive down to, um, Wilkes-Barre, go to state college. So you, you've got to kind of disrupt the pattern that they've been using the past few years. We're hosting the business after hours with Richard tonight out at the airport. We've gotten great support from the chamber and the local business community. But it is an education process. We opened another market just a month before this one. Um, out in West Lafayette, Indiana, a home of Purdue University, my son's an alum. Um, they hadn't had service for twenty-two years. And, uh, they're only seventy-five miles from Indy. And of course you've got the two airports in Chicago. And you guys are actually tracking better than they are. So I'm hoping back to school at Purdue is gonna give us a little boost there, but it, it does take time. It does. It's not, it's not gonna happen overnight. But we're very satisfied with, uh, with where we are after three months. We've been getting great support from Richard and his folks who actually handle our flights for us. Uh, saving money and helping us not dig into the revenue guarantee as deeply. Anyway, I've been doing all the talking. I'm here basically to answer your questions and, um, good to be here today. Questions?
No, I, I, uh, I, I will agree with you, Mark, as I, I took your flight back here to Williamsport on, on the initial flight. And your, your little bus that takes you right to the plane, I mean, the, the, the Dulles Airport. And nothing against Philadelphia, Philadelphia Airport, but what a pleasure walking through that airport at the post of the Philadelphia Airport. It was easy, simple. And I, and I think as people see that and they utilize that plane once or twice, they'll, they'll come back.
Right.
Do we have projections as to how far out until we're at a break even?
I knew you were gonna ask that. So we have already for
Predictable?
October, a hundred bookings, November twenty-nine, December forty-four, January twenty-two, February three. So we, they're, but they're booking way out, booking six months.
How many do you have to do a month? All part?
It depends on the fare. It's, it's combination of, of the yield we get per ticket and the number of passengers. And it's, that's a balancing act. You know, you don't want to, you don't want to jack up the fare so high that it discourages people, but you also, you have to make money if you can.
Right.
And I mean, airfares have just gone through the roof. I, I mean, I fly other airlines all the time and I flew to Indianapolis last week. It was five hundred and sixty dollars one way. It's over a thousand bucks. You know, so I, I think it's a combination of the pilot cost, the fuel cost, and even station personnel. A lot of, uh, states have raised the minimum wage. I mean, we fly in California now. Any airport employee by law has to be paid at least twenty dollars and that's McDonald's, you know, so we're, we have to be above that. So all those costs get passed on to our customer.
Mark, one concern we've heard is an earlier flight and a need for it. Is there any news on that?
We're working on it. You know, it's, it's a jigsaw puzzle because we, we are only starting to receive our new aircraft at the end of September. We had hoped to have them in the spring. Once the aircraft availability loosens up a little bit, we've got areas all across our system where we want to optimize the schedule. We know it's suboptimal right now, but it's a start. And what we're committed to this market, I will tell you, when I was at headquarters last week, I was just crowing about how well we're doing. And it was great that the Little League World Series was here. Some point I said, turn on your TV tonight, watch the damn World Series. That's our town. So everybody's really excited about this and we've got nowhere to go but up in terms of growth and volume.
Do, do we think we're at a break even by the end of twenty twenty-four or is that too optimistic?
Um, I'd have to do an analysis of it because that, these projections, it's not my bailiwick. But I can let you know for sure where, where, where we think the lines might cross. But just anecdotally, this is better than I thought we would be at ninety days. And I've opened fifty markets, so I know, I kind of know what the pacing is. And I think this also is going to be a very good holiday market, very good Thanksgiving, Christmas. Then you get into the, um, snowbirds, you know, then you get spring break. So you've got, um, we're coming into a really good season. Plus October is usually the best month for business travel. That's just a little ways. Anyway, thank you for having me.
Thank you for being here.
Be here. And please reach out to me via Richard if you need any more information. I will try to get you that projection number, sir.
With bailiwick.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Write that down. Write that down.
Okay, personnel actions. Mark?
All right. Uh, good morning. Through the following personnel actions as conditional offers of employment, subject to the successful completion of a background check and all other employment conditions is outlined in attachment A. We have one. Uh, in the resource management services, Ron Gosnay, recycling laborer, pay rate four, full-time. Fourteen fifty per hour, eighty hours per pay period. This is an anticipated start date, September ninth, twenty twenty-four.
Motion accept.
I will make the motion.
Second.
Off your side.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hold up.
Maya?
All right, moving to action items, um, six point one, Monica Fox.
Monica?
Good morning. Uh, six point one, we are seeking approval for fiscal year twenty twenty-four community development and block grant project selection and finalization. So those projects for Lake Coming County are life-like coming parking lot restoration, YWCA building improvements phase three. Jersey Shore is Meadow Alley Road reconstruction. Montoursville is Montoursville curb cuts phase five. And South Williamsport Borough is South Williamsport slum blight removal.
Hey, and these projects, uh, you know, we're talking about amounts of two hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars. Uh, Jersey Shore, ninety-five thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars, Montoursville, one hundred, one thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And South Williamsport, one hundred seventeen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars. So it's great to see those kind of funds coming to those municipalities, these projects. So we want to thank, you can see the con for your work and bringing these, these dollars to our community.
Of course.
Motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Off her side.
Hi.
Go ahead.
Okay, six point two is a vote to approve for fiscal year twenty-three CDVG grant or sub-recipient agreement with Jersey Shore Borough in the amount of seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
Motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Off your side.
Hi.
Then six point three is a vote to approve for fiscal year of twenty twenty-two, CDVG sub-recipient agreement with Jersey Shore Borough in the amount of seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars.
And motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Um, are they the same? Did they just? Oh, one is twenty-two, one is ten.
Different years.
Different years.
Oh, I'll second.
Off her side.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you, Monica.
That's The run next.
Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Six point four, seeking your approval to purchase fifteen new switches in the amount of ninety-one thousand, two hundred and six and fifteen cents. The switches that we have today are over twenty years old and they just don't support our new technology.
They've seen their day.
And it is in our twenty twenty-four budget.
Okay, motion accept.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Off your side.
I, I.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jason York says six point five, six point six.
Commissioners.
Okay, Jason hit in the middle of the lineup today.
Yeah, Maya's taking pity on me, I guess.
I don't do that. I usually just did it in special order perceived.
Oh, you didn't. You always put Jason. Always put Jason.
That's all good. Commissioner, six point five, uh, this is approved of Reynolds R and L Development Company in the amount of five thousand dollars. We do not have a excavator on site in RMS that has what we call long reach. We have some dredging we have to do and I want said pond and one sediment box. So they have the, what we call long reach. So renting their long reach excavator.
Um, motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Off your side.
Hi.
Thank you. Commissioner, six point six, that falls in the category, didn't see that one coming. Uh, vote to approve the rental of Clayton Brothers for D four dozer. We were so fortunate and blessed to have a lightning strike on the top of Landfill Hill that took out pretty much everything electrical in a D four dozer, which is a very key piece. It does our slope work, finishes all the grading. Uh, took out every ECM. We've had the insurance adjuster there. And in the meantime, we needed, we need to rent a D four dozer. It is that key of piece of equipment, but, uh, we're not sure where the insurance claims going with that one. The insurance is adjuster. So what's one of these costs? About eighty? And we're like, no, try three hundred. So we're still working on whether the, or D four that got struck by lightning, what, what we can do with it. It cooked it and we took out radios and stuff on other machines. So never had this one before, before you for a lightning strike, but, uh, I need a D four to keep moving. So I appreciate your approval.
Take it out of your twenty twenty-four budget.
Well, this one upfront, but this one will be submitted for the insurance claim, the rental. Yes, sir.
Motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Off your side.
Hi.
Bye.
Thank you. Thank you. I have a dumb question for you before you go. Does Little League, is business slower during Little League because scares people away from driving? Obviously people coming from that way, there's that half mile of traffic. Do you see any difference?
No, but you understand nine, so we serviced nine, between nine and eleven counties on some of the smaller haulers coming up. Most of our business is south of Lake Coming County. Yeah, twenty-seven percent of like coming, of our annual tonnage comes from like Coming County, but every other county is south of those. Hence why last week we talked about the south entrance exit that's in that, that's gonna be huge. There's so much of, but our transfer trucks drive through the traffic, uh, our, our curbside and our drop-off guys have to go through that traffic, but for the most part, it's
It's not very, it's like
And then this year, of course, we had the flooding situation. So, yeah, it's, it's just one of the things our guys know to grin and bear it and we just take our time and go through. Usually the state police have everything lined up pretty good. We can get through there. So, no.
I just wondered that one last week while I was watching baseball.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Maya.
All right, the rest of the items, you're stuck with me. Uh, the first item, six point seven, uh, vote to approve agreement with White Deer Fund LLC, doing business as code. This is to provide child welfare services for the patient. And of course, depending on the services, um, it varies pricing program.
Motion accept.
Make the motion.
I'll second.
Um, six point eight, vote to approve agreement with outside end. Again, this is another child welfare service provided for juvenile probation. Again, basically verified program.
Should accept.
I'll make the motion.
Second. You're sorry.
Hi.
And next item, six point nine, uh, vote to approve agreement with Delphi Village. Again, same situation for juvenile probation. This is another provider for child welfare services.
So I'll make the motion.
That's okay.
Off your side.
Hi.
Six point ten, vote to approve amendment to the agreement with D S C Solutions. This is, uh, our janitorial service provider for Partnership Health Center. Um, working with the staff there, we try to figure out ways to help, uh, reduce the overall cost. So, um, staff up there is going to pick up some of the cleaning up there to reduce our monthly bill. So this is to assist them.
Thank them for that also.
Yeah.
Except, I'll make the motion. I'll second. Off your side.
Hi.
Six point eleven, vote to approve the municipal waste planning grant agreement from environmental protection, see the amount of fifty-six thousand, six hundred and seven dollars. This is just a, a grant that we submitted earlier for the municipal waste plan. Uh, this is the formal award as such.
And motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Your side.
Hi.
Next item, six point twelve, vote to approve change or, uh, change where to Church of Savior Social Hall, H and P Construction, the amount of eight hundred and seventy dollars. This is, uh, as it relates to the voting, uh, pulling place on construction that they're doing, just as they're getting in there, they're finding additional changes that could be needed to the original store.
In motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Off your side.
Uh, right.
Uh, next item, six thirteen, vote to approve the agreement with Tricia D. Hoover Esquire. Um, this is as a result of staffing situation that's taking place in the public defender's office, uh, because of them being short-staffed. Fortunately, you have to continue services. So as a result, they're contracting out for this services. Although this is not an approved twenty point four budget, there are budget items that we, I have set aside to assist in their effort. Hopefully that, in the meantime, we can get someone on board and that one will help reduce it. So obviously these contracts are as
Should accept. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Off your side.
Hi.
Next item, six point fourteen, vote to approve the amendment to be granted with Matthew Deemer Esquire. Again, um, this is just this is again, the public defender on taking on more cases. Matthew Deemer actually was already on retention for, um, specific service to the court, uh, public defender's office. However, given the light of the situation, he's going to be taken.
Motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Off your side.
Hi.
Six point fifteen, vote to approve the agreement with, uh, Michael Sullivan Esquire. Again, same situation, just, uh, providing services for the public defender.
Motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Your side.
Hi.
Next item, six point sixteen, vote to approve agreement with Robert Pafa Esquire. Again, provide legal representation of the public defender's office.
Motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Off your side.
Hi.
And that's all I have. Then there's Commissioner comment?
I'd like to extend, uh, congratulations to Billman sitting in the audience on a regular basis on his anniversary. His fiftieth anniversary this past week. Uh, we'd like to extend a congratulations to Larry Stout and his wife. Any more years?
I think we want to extend congratulations to Larry and condolences to his wife. Isn't that how that was? Fifty years. Wow.
It's forty years.
Then it's moved out since then.
Welcome.
I don't really have much.
I don't have much this year.
It's kind of Little League, like we have to call them after the storm. It's Little League, this sheriff would like to make a comment about it.
I want to say, we do have a meeting, uh, we've arranged a meeting with the uh, both senators offices. Casey Ian Fetterman and Congressman Thompson. His office will be meeting at the flood flood to sites, um, this coming Tuesday at ten AM, we'll be meeting up in the Trout Run area. Uh, we've invited him to tour the damage from flood. And all three offices, I welcome our invitation. Uh, we'll be here Tuesday at ten AM, third. As we pour the flood damage, the sheriff will be joining us. Uh, Joe Hamm will also be joining us and Senator Yaw's office. So we'll have all the state and federal officials on site Tuesday as we tour the flood damage and look to obtain state and federal funding to assist the flood victims.
Okay, sure.
Uh, to follow up, once, once we had the the call, the call came in, if you remember, we were in prison boards. These people said they've gotten the urgent call from more like coming from Captain Kreiner about the water rise there. So he began identify deputy staff that were available, non-incentive deputy staff as far as needing a our NOR operation. Send them out, and then he went, he went west. He was assisting the rescues in Larryville area, Saliesburg area. Uh, which coincidentally is where the filtration plan is that has been affected. Uh, I went north to the only coming area, and I assisted there. We had other deputies assist there. Um, and then sometimes when we get these floods in the county, sometimes you misinformation, and it's not uncommon. There's so many different areas that it affected. Usually in the county, it's county Y. Not very often that we have you know, an epicenter in Saliesburg and only in the Trout Run area, because even Laurel Lake coming didn't get it as hard as they usually do. So I lost track of the Trout Run issue. In the meantime, Chief Spiegel had been the Trout Run. He was assisting with deputies, uh, and the fire department and Pendot with the rescues. When I, when I finally got up there on Saturday, I I realized that that little town, you know, fifteen miles north of us, that little town lost every piece of infrastructure that they have. They lost the municipal building. Uh, three to four feet of mud and flooded water. They lost the post office that the township building owns adjacent to the township building. They lost their only grocery store. They lost their gas station. Uh, they lost their larger restaurant and a smaller restaurant. Uh, they lost the bridge in front of the fire station on Route fourteen. And most uh, most affecting is the fact that they lost the fire station. All the engineering reports indicate that the fire station, uh, is not going to be salvageable except for the two bays and that the two base commissioners that that we were all in when we met with the community on on uh, I lose track of Saturday or Sunday.
Sunday.
Yeah, and and they're just starting to have, now that we've, now that we've, I'll get into a minute, we've gone into recovery phase and getting back, getting every, everybody back on their feet slowly. Um, it poses the question of how do you build a fire station in the same location when the flood, when the flood level is going to change? The feds have never got a lot of flood level to be where where it was when that fire station is out there. So land is obviously number one on their list, and they have had, they have two opportunities at least, um, I won't release it publicly, but there are two opportunities that are very, very viable opportunities that are way out of the flood plain. Um, and they're now starting to explore those areas. But to lose all that infrastructure on a stream that's called Trout Run uh, that has never seen water twenty, fifteen, twenty feet high that we all saw when we went up the, saw the aftermath. And to move, to move logs, literally, for those of you who didn't see any of the photos ministers have, I mean, they're moving logs this big, right? And blocked that bridge and then took that bridge down. Uh, we were fortunate uh, through Representative Ham to get the Secretary of Transportation to meet with us. And our command team that we had put together, uh, were very convincing with him. Uh, where we got back from district was he was very impressed, and he wanted everything to move and expedite as fast as he could. Uh, in his words, the Route fourteen bridge was his version of the I ninety-five bridge, which I don't believe he was part of. So that was a very positive note, and we got very fast action. They were doing core testing the next morning, the afternoon. They were doing surveying all weekend. Um, they got the light poles in, uh, for the cut over. So from that sense, from an infrastructure sense, and the volunteer, the volunteer work, support the county has given them uh, at the commissioner's level, uh, at the RMS level, the planning level, the sheriff's office. It's all been very, very helpful. What we don't have is a little town with many folks who have very limited means, who just don't have cash rebuilt. Putting along that stream that we'll see Tuesday when we, we do the tour. Um, they just don't have money to rebuild. And federal support is critically needed to help places like Trout Run, Pennsylvania. Or it doesn't get, in many situations, it will not get rebuilt. So the volunteers came through, local government came through. Um, we need big government to step up. And hopefully, when we meet Tuesday, we can, we can get that impression. Um, I absolutely believe there's money in the federal government someplace to help these people. Doesn't make any sense that we can't do that. But I want to update you, um, the 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 gas station's open, completely clean. Um, our, I can't forget, uh, P R C and our partners at P R C, who sent male war crew, female war crews, and our partners at A P O um, who sent uh, Corey, uh, Frisson, who brings the community service folks. We were coordinating them all over the place for the whole, uh, most whole two weeks I was there. Um, did a tremendous amount of of work to help get the gas station open. To get the uh, the grocery store open. The township building probably won't have their meeting this month, but we believe that that building will be open in operation, including the post office by the end of the month. Uh, we had assistance from a Congress Amuser's office. We weren't getting a lot of action from the postal side. Uh, Wednesday, Director McDermott, uh, made a call to Congress Amuser's office, talked to somebody, a high-level rep at his office. We had a call back from the postal service, and they cleared away for the township to go in and got that, that building. So that that helped. We also got to move, um, I made the connection, we got to move, they they were bringing box mail, P O box mail to to Williamsport. And the residents were having to go to Williamsport. Well, there are people who don't have cars, people who don't have ways to get there, and they're hourly people. So we got them to move post, the the mail to Cogan Station. And hopefully, we'll soon get the mail moved back to to uh, to the post office in Trout Run. But all that said, um, we need the help of big government to help these people because there's not much more we can do. We've cleaned it. We cleaned it up. It's not looked much different than it looked when we toured on Tuesdays than it looked the last two weeks. But big government has to hopefully come through. Hopefully, we meet the threshold, I think it's a twenty-three, twenty-four minute or threshold. Um, I want to thank you two commissioners and and thank all the county. Everybody in for, everybody I called. I don't, I don't make a call, and I've done this almost a living now. You know, that's what, I don't make a call anywhere in county system. And I help, or the public. The public sector was incredible and probably you're operating this ship, and it was a real demonstration of how hard we work and how hard those volunteers out there.
Well, we're very encouraged. The federal government will be here on Tuesday.
Yeah, that'll be a big.
That'd be a big plus.
To see it, it's just different to see it than it is to see.
And then our email to them was that you can't do it justice by looking at just pictures. You'd have to be here in person. They've taken us up on the invitation.
The first place is local, we pop for, pop for length. Up there to what was Senator Converse cottage that you bought in the fifties. And it passed it on to the generations. It was a beautiful, beautiful cottage for half a century or more. That's just a decimate. That stream moved a hundred, hundred fifty feet over to that cottage, took out the whole side of the cottage. Uh, while they watched just in anger. So, thank you for coordinating. I'm already speaking to the Trout Run, our leadership at Trout Run. I'm going to give a briefing from my experience as a dealing with beginning with our federal legislators, what to expect, you know, how to be prepared to respond to specific questions. So it'll be
Great, thank you. Yes, force.
I don't have as much to say.
I was gonna say, he's a tough one to follow. I won't try.
I guess at this, but we're moving on to public comment.
Uh, yeah, uh, but but my comment, it kind of goes off of what what the sheriff had to say. Uh, we did have some polling places affected by the flood event. Uh, and and the last time we had floods back in twenty-eleven was before my time. I don't know how we were affected back then. But we've known for a long time, we have some facilities that are in the flood plain. So when something like this happens, we ended up having to call out every facility to figure out where 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 there were impacts. And as it turns out, there were two. Uh, Cogan House Township and also Lewis Township where where the fire hall was our polling place. Uh, we have been locating alternate facilities. That will be handled at a board of elections meeting officially later this month. Uh, we're looking at using the township buildings in both cases, and I was actually up in Lewis Township about week and a half ago to look at the township building. They are making good progress at getting that up and running in the short term. It's obviously extremely important for for the county that 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 facility be up and running available as a polling place in November. But but it's also important for the community, you know, to try to get some sense of normality back. But we did have those two areas affected, and we're going to make those changes later this month and get the affected communities notified of that, so they know where to go vote.
Okay, thank you, force. Turning in our public comment this time. Hey, any online?
Uh, there's just one. It's just more of a courtesy. Just a micro secret. It says, good morning, commissioners.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Good morning.
All right, well, we've completed our agenda, so we will be adjourned. Our next meeting will be Thursday, September fifth, twenty twenty-four, ten AM. Thank you, everyone. Have a good day.